This meeting to order, our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Owen.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To continue our emphasis on our vision and mission, I thought I would take a couple of moments at each meaning, meeting to explore the meaning and clarity around these, and provide clarity around these statements. Our vision is to grow lifelong learners who contribute their talents, strengths, and skills to build a stronger community. I've discovered several definitions of lifelong learner or lifelong learning and wanted to share a favorite one. Lifelong learning is the ongoing voluntary and self-motivated pursuit of knowledge. And I definitely want all of our students to have that passion for knowledge and, and I'm glad that our vision includes that reference. So we'll continue to look at this more closely as we go along. Our board will meet in quarterly work session on Wednesday, October 28th at 5:00 PM in this boardroom. And we look forward to receiving our annual legislative update from our class representatives with Millsap's Gowan Government Relations at that meeting. As Superintendent announced, Superintendent Thomas announced at our work session last week, Knox County Schools will be offering families the opportunity to switch their learning model between virtual and in-person between Monday, October 26th and Friday, November 6th. Families who are happy with their current learning model will not need to do anything, but those wishing to make a change will be asked to do so using an online form. More detail will be shared soon, so be sure to look for that information. Finally, next week, October 12th through the 16th, it's Knox, is Knox County Schools' fall break. And I'm sure that the board will join me in wishing all of our students, families, and staff a very restful and very well-deserved break, more so than any other year. So with that, do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And today, I would like to refer now to Superintendent Bob Thomas, and he will have the next portion of our agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The fun things we get to do, wow, we, we like to take a few minutes and recognize, make sure that we recognize the tremendous achievements that have happened this year, so far this year, and this was early in the year, by the way. But first, I had the privilege of going to Karnes Middle School on September 9th to celebrate with Mrs. Kami Lunsford, who was named Tennessee Teacher of the Year. My goodness, Tennessee Teacher of the Year. As you may have seen, Education Commissioner Dr. Penny Schwinn presented Ms. Lunsford with the award, and it was a great opportunity to highlight her achievements. I think you already, also got a check for $3,000, I believe, too. So that doesn't hurt matters at all. For those of you who've never met Mrs. Lunsford, she's an example of the enthusiasm, the passion, and the innovative thinking that happens in classrooms across our district every day. Officially, Mrs. Lunsford is a chorus teacher, but her students get, also get to use instruments like guitars, ukuleles, and drums in class. That kind of unique instruction is crucial for keeping students engaged. And we're very proud of Mrs. Lunsford's creativity on behalf of her students. And at this time, we'd like to present an award, I'd like for the whole board, since this is a Tennessee Teacher of the Year, to get, get in the photograph. So if we could all get in the photograph, and the principal, Brent, Brent's here, too. So where's, there he is.
So I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for the honor. And I'm gonna try to do this and not be emotional, but thank you for this honor. I feel super honored right now, as you can imagine, a little over-honored. Every teacher should get this award this year. We should be in buses, knocking on doors, and handing out checks. But, but it's funny, I do want to share with you my thoughts and just some positivity, because I know your lives have been as hectic as ours. And so I just want to share, like, up to the minute while he was talking, my heart started to race. And I'm a, I'm a music teacher, I'm a performance teacher, I teach kids how to perform under pressure. And that, that heart racing that just happened was not the nerves about, because I'm about to speak, or I'm about to have a picture taken or anything like that, it was pride. I want to share with you that in March, it felt a lot like a natural disaster when we got unplugged from our kids. And for the whole spring break, y'all let us enjoy our spring break, we didn't get a single email. Now, we weren't enjoying it, I was biting my nails the whole time, but still, no email. And, and no expectations and nothing crazy. And then the first time we heard a direction from the board and from Bob Thomas and his staff, it was, we're concerned about kids eating and being safe. And that's when I was proud, way before I got this fancy award, that I was a teacher at Knox County, especially during this time. So thank you, Bob Thomas, for the hard work that I know that is happening in your office all the time. If you're all preparing the wait for what's going on, what a time to be alive. I say that all the time and usually sarcastically, but, but, but especially here, I am super proud to be with Knox County during this time, during this most important time for education and for our kids. So thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Kami, for that, and she does speak for many teachers in Knox County, and that's very sweet to hear. And she's a great representative for teachers this year, and I'm very proud of her. So Mr. Thomas, we'll turn it over to you again.
Okay, yes, thank you. And the second exciting event that happened last month was at Seymour Green Magnet Academy, which was recognized as a school of promise by the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, NIET. And is Robin still here? Robin? Robin, get in here. And your team, if your team, yeah, come on, come on, team. Yeah, so we, we took a picture earlier, but just to get the team, team in front of the board here, so while we recognize them. Seymour Green is just one of two schools in the whole country, one of two in the whole United States of America that NIET is honoring as a school of promise this year. And I believe, Robin, you got a check, a check from NIET for $5,000, I believe? And I think they challenged you to go for the, is it the $50,000 check that's next, the next award? So, so what they'll be going for is the $50,000 check in the next round. But this distinction recognizes early success in implementing NIET initiatives to improve teaching and learning. After consecutive years of Level 1 student achievement growth, the school earned Level 5 in 2019. That's the highest growth rating possible in the state. While testing was suspended this spring, NIET and Seymour Green continued to model a spirit of collaboration and innovation throughout the COVID-19 transition. So congratulations, Robin, and Team Seymour Green for your accomplishments. And have a certificate for you, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for being here.
Again, this has been a very challenging year, but these recognitions show that our teachers, principals, and staff are continuing to do outstanding work even in difficult circumstances. So thanks to Ms. Lunsford and Ms. Curry for all the work that they do for our students and their communities. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much for being here. And this, even with the difficult circumstances, it's so much, it's so nice to have things to celebrate. And we do have a fantastic district with wonderful teachers and leaders, and so we're all very grateful. It's fun to celebrate for a minute. Okay, board members, before reading, before the reading of the voting items, I wanted to note that our Board Committee enroll appointments for 2020, 2021 are part of the consent agenda. Thank you all for your willingness to serve our district in each of these areas. Also, you have a copy at the table of a memorandum from me regarding item 11B and the appointment of a special question committee. A copy of the memorandum is also attached to the electronic agenda for the public's reference. Dr. Russell is here this evening, if there are questions. But I did want to let you know that he has confirmed to the board office that over 15% of our professional educators have expressed an interest in collaborative conferencing. So we will need to finalize this appointment this evening in order to hold a first committee meeting the week after fall break to meet the timeline requirements under PECA. Finally, you received an email communication from Superintendent Thomas regarding his recommendation that we cover the entire cost of the increase on healthcare, on the health insurance premiums effective January 2021. An additional attachment was added to the electronic agenda reflecting that new detail for your consideration. Superintendent Thomas can speak to that item or answer any questions about that when it's read, but I wanted to make sure that we note that for the public's benefit. And I'll refer to Ms. Cootney now for the reading of the items.
Item 7, consign agenda.
We have a motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Satterfield, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, aye. 341, uniform grading policy as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bab, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, aye. 351, credit recovery as amended.
I believe that was Ms. Owen, Ms. Owen, and, and then Ms. Christie seconded the motion, do we have discussion? Okay, any, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
8C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, aye. 373, graduating with honors or distinction as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bab, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J130, home schools as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Christie, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J150, school admissions as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J151, student assignment as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Christie, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8G, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J194, zero tolerance as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bab, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8H, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J280, alternative school programs as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Satterfield, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8I, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J400, child abuse and neglect as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Satterfield, and Mr. Owen, did you have a comp?
Mr. Watson?
So sorry, please forgive me.
No worries, you've been saying Owen a lot, so it's all good.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Dupler, just for the public, the, the language in line 8 and 9 around the child abuse coordinator, child abuse coordinator was really added out of changes in the law, correct?
Mr. Dupler? Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Watson. Yes, absolutely, child, child abuse coordinator. The law was changed this summer from the Tennessee Legislature, and, and they mandated, the legislature mandated a child abuse coordinator be named.
Yeah, I, I think it's important whenever we're setting policy that's names, roles, and schools, that we also have a mechanism in that policy to ensure accountability to that designation. And I don't think it needs to be anything hard and fast, but I would like to recommend after discussion, an amended motion to add some language to that, to ensure that some accountability.
Do we have any other comment before, okay, would you like to offer substitute motion?
Well, it's an amendment to the motion, is that correct, Mr. Dupler? Is it the way I'm doing that?
You could, I mean, you could do either one, you know, with a substitute.
I want to go for amendment to the motion.
Okay, okay, yeah, all right.
We're gonna try that one out, I don't get to hear that one a lot, so. So my amendment to the motion is that in line 9, it would read after the sentence about the child abuse and alternative child abuse coordinators. It says, "The Director of School Culture shall maintain a list of child abuse and alternative child abuse coordinators, including the name of each school and assigned coordinators throughout Knox County Schools. This list shall be updated annually."
Did everybody get, yeah, can you?
Yeah, let me pull this thing down.
Okay, so hold on one second, so we're on line 9, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, let's see, it would be, yes, line 9 after the sentence that says, "Alternative child abuse coordinator," before, when a report is made.
Okay.
So it would say, "The Director of School Culture shall maintain a list of child abuse and alternative child abuse coordinators, including the name of each school and assigned coordinators throughout Knox County Schools. This list shall be updated annually."
Okay, all right. Do you see any issue with that amendment, Mr. Thomas?
Not at all, Madam Chair, not at all.
All right. Do we have a, we need a second on that? Okay, so we have a, an amendment to the motion, we have a second by Ms. Satterfield, discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That amends the motion, but now you need to have, have a vote on the actual motion complete.
On the amended motion?
Yes, with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we, Ms. Cootney?
Yeah, the original motion was made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Satterfield.
Okay, so if there's no, is there any other discussion or question on this, Ms. Owen?
I have a question on the amendment, did, was it updated annually or at least annually?
Updated annually, shall be updated annually.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8J, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy, J580, student suicide prevention as amended.
We have a motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Owen, discussion? Mr. Watson?
Yes, for the same purpose of the last policy, I think, again, when we identify things in our policies that need to be named at each school, we had, need to have a mechanism for accountability. And so I would propose an amended, amendment to the motion that states, "The Director of School Culture shall maintain a list of suicide prevention coordinators, including the name of each school and assigned coordinators throughout Knox County Schools. This list shall be updated annually." And I propose that that's inserted in line 21 after "Suicide Prevention Coordinator" is stated.
So at the very end of that sentence?
Correct.
Okay, so it would just be on line 21 at the end of that sentence?
Yes. Yes, so, let me do this thing, okay. "The Director of School Culture shall maintain a list of suicide prevention coordinators, including the name of each school and assigned coordinator throughout Knox County Schools. This list shall be updated annually."
Okay, any question on that, Ms. Owen?
I, I think I have a question for Mr. Dupler. If it says shall be updated annually, would that keep us from updating us the list more often than that?
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, no, I mean, it would not prevent sooner updating, but it, but it would mandate at least that once per year, yes.
Should we include at least, or does it matter?
I, I, I think you can go either way, I mean, I mean, if you're afraid that, that by just saying annually, it will only be done once a year, and you want to do it more often, then, then maybe add, you know, at least.
I'm thinking that if, if the coordinator left Knox County Schools in the middle of the year, then that might not get updated. So it's unlikely to do that.
And I'm fine with adding that language. My intent in saying amended annually is, we all know that there's turnover in our schools, and if somebody were to leave a school who's designated in this role, I would want to make sure that we're assessing that at least once a year to make sure that somebody does get named back into that position, so.
Mr. Watson, do you want to do a friendly amendment to your amendment to add at least?
I will friendlier amend my amendment to the motion and put at least.
Okay, and do we have a second on that? Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment first, so any other discussion? Okay, we're voting on the amendment that was proposed by Mr. Watson. Do we, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we go back to the original amendment, I mean, original motion, who was, which, who made that?
That was made by Ms. Christie and Ms. Owen, was the second.
Okay, any, any additional conversation on this? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9A, approve receipt of fiscal year 2021 21st Century Community Learning Center grant funding in the amount of $323,989. And fiscal year 2020 carryover funding in the amount of $136,793.74 for after-school programming at Chrisdenberry and Pond Gap Elementary Schools.
We have a motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Ms. Owen, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve receipt of fiscal year 2021 21st Century Community Learning Center grant funding in the amount of $110,500. And fiscal year 2020 carryover funding in the amount of $42,047.74 for after-school programming at Inskip Elementary School.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve grant agreement with Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors Incorporated in conjunction with Novo Foundation and Education First for the term of August 1, 2020 to December 31, 2021. And receipt of SEL in action grant funding in the amount of $25,000 designated to the implementation of social and emotional learning initiatives.
We have a motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Watson, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve elementary school dental program agreement and Elgin Children's Foundation grant for student transportation costs associated with the program, up to $6,000 for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
We have a motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Christie, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
9E, approve receipt of Dollar General Literacy Foundation grants in the total amount of $6,000 for literacy projects at Adrian Burnett Elementary School, Harden Valley Elementary School, and Karnes Middle School.
We have a motion by Ms. Bowns, a second by Ms. Christie, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
9F, approve award of public supermarkets charities grant, the amount of $250 for Gibbs High School designated to the school's 2020-2021 robotics program.
We have a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Ms. Satterfield, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, approve contract with Henley Roofing Company for roof upgrades to Fair Garden Family Center at a cost of $343,300 using fiscal year 2020 capital plan funds.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Bowns, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B was withdrawn. 10C, approve contract with the Chancellor, Masters, and Scholars of the University of Cambridge for provision of an advanced academic program for the term of November 1, 2020 through October 31, 2023.
We have a motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Bab, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A, approve schematic design for additions to Bricky MacLeod Elementary School by Design Innovation Architects.
We have a motion by Ms. Bowns, a second by Ms. Satterfield, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B, approve appointment of Knox County Board of Education Special Question Committee as required by the Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act of 2011.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Owen, I heard seconds from many people, we'll go with Mr. Watson. And I believe we have public forum on this topic.
Ms. Coats, would you like to come speak and just say your name and county residence?
Toni Coats, Knox County, President of the Knox County Education Association. I appreciate this opportunity to speak about this Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act of having a special questioning committee. This will be the third time, the fourth time, really, that we had this special questioning committee. I ask for your approval of this as, the educators, as you heard earlier, as the chair spoke, about 15% of the educators would like to have this collaborative conferencing. This keeps the line of communication open as it relates to what's going on with educators and with the superintendent's office and his administration. We want to continue this working relationship that has worked very well for us for the last collaborative conferencing opportunities, and we just want to be afforded to do that again. And we appreciate you of considering this and hope that you pass this line item, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C, approve budget line item transfers for year-end fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $1,900,000.
I think that was Ms. Owen, no, Ms. Satterfield, if I'm not looking up, I can't tell sometimes. Ms. Satterfield was the motion and Mr. Watson seconded, do we have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D, approve employee health insurance premium rates for 2021 to reflect employer covering the entire increase.
We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Christie, discussion? Ms. Bab?
I guess, Mr. Thomas, if you could sort of explain why we've made the change between last week and this week?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Ms. Bab, members of the board, after last week's meeting, I guess reflecting on, on all of that and how hard our employees have worked over the last seven weeks to, I'm talking about certified and classified employees, and not everyone has insurance, only about 4,500 of our 75,000 to 8,000, 7,500 to 8,000 have insurance. But, but just a way for the board to show their appreciation that, that for all the hard work that's been done to our folks, and I talked to Ron about this one, check with our finance folks, because fiscal responsibility is important, making a decision like this as well. And, and what, what we talked about last week was 170,000. This adds basically another 175,000 to that, that the board would pay. So, that would be $345,000 that the board would pay to, to actually pick up the two, the entire cost of the 2% increase. What that does, of course, is folks that have insurance, it leaves the premium flat. They will not see an increase in December like they would have. So, it's just to show appreciation to our employees for all of the, the hard work that they've done, and to help as much as we could in terms of helping them not go backwards. You know, we gave a raise a couple of years ago, but this, this would have been a, an increase, obviously, in their premium, which would make their earnings a little bit less for the year. So, just after a lot of conversation with Mr. McPherson and prior consideration on, on the best course to take, thought I wanted to come back and just recommend to the board that we pay the full increase and, and absorb that. We, you know, we're in the bottom 30%, I think, when it comes to benefits, 30% of the state in terms of what our benefit contribution. So, this doesn't help us much, but it does help us by six tenths of a percent. So, it's going in the right direction. The average before this, if you, if we, if we do this, the average prior to this action would, on average, 70.5% is what the board pays towards employee insurance. This would actually raise it to 71.1, so six tenths of a point in the right direction. And I think it's important to note, too, that the board, this gets lost in the conversation a lot of times, but, you know, the board pays, just out of the general purpose budget, almost $35 million towards employee, just medical insurance. And, and if you look at federal programs and Title I, it's probably upwards of 36, between 36, $37 million that the, that the board pays out. I think a lot of times that gets lost in the conversation, what the board does do toward insurance. And just would appreciate you considering this recommendation, and I think our employees would be very appreciative of, of the board picking up the increase. That way, they don't, they won't see an increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Watson?
Just a comment, and Superintendent Thomas, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the percentage that we pay is not just for the employee, but it's also potentially the spouse and the children, too, correct?
That's, that is correct. We have several different plans, that employee only, employee with children, maybe, and then an employee with a spouse, possibly, no children. Two employees and spout, which would include maybe a spouse not working, two employees where both parties work, both, both spouses work, and then family. So, yes, there's, there's a percentage paid on, on all of those various plans. We've got the premier PPO, the standard limited, and the CDHP plan. So, actually, four different plans, but about six versions within each one of those plans. So, so you're, you're correct.
Yeah, sure. The reason I wanted to bring that out is I think it's really important to note that, I think that says something, that Knox County schools values our families of our educators as well, that we're not just looking out for the employee themselves, but also the entire family. So, although, yes, we're potentially at 71.1%, I think it's great that we're looking out for the entire unit, so.
Excellent, excellent point.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 11E, approved restoration of five workdays for 255-day employees.
We have a motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Ms. Christie, discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. McMillan. So sorry, Mr. McMillan has a question.
I won't be long. I, I just want to make a comment and a question. Superintendent, these raises on insurance and other things that we've moved, transfer of money, that won't have any, or this, would not, I know this wouldn't have any impact on, I believe you mentioned, given the, if we hadn't had money, given a one-time bonus, does that, it doesn't affect that, or?
That, and thank you, Mr. McMillan, great point. Again, I meant to say that when I was talking about the insurance. We will still look at another couple of data points and, in terms of if we're able to provide a bonus to employees, certainly like to bring that back to board, to the board for consideration as well. So, neither one of these actions will impact that, but we do want to look at another data point or two before we come back and do that. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to make sure. I, I don't want to belabor the point. I think we probably will be okay from the latest figures of buying on a national basis. I think they had a report come out yesterday that showed something like what Ron talked about last week with like a 130% increase. I guess that will continue. We'll hope it will. The only, only thing, and certainly, I don't have a problem with, with the people having it. It's just a matter of when they get it. And I, I personally would prefer us wait till spring, right before spring break, or April 1st. But I realize that I'm the only one of that opinion, so I'm sure it will, it will pass and everything. But I want to make sure that everybody understood that I did not have a problem with these employees having it. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Yes. I know this, I have no idea what our ratings are for these, these meetings. I don't know how many people are watching it in the public, and I know we had a meeting last week where some of this was addressed. But for those who are watching, I think it'd be great, Mr. McPherson, if you would just briefly tell us why we even have the ability to make some of these decisions right now?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Yes, so, we, and I'll, I'll try to be really brief. So, when we, when we drafted the budget this year, we did it from a very conservative basis, based on everything that we were hearing from economists locally, at the state, nationally. And as it turns out, consumer spending, though it was not quite at the level as, as, as the previous year in some of what I would call the COVID months, it was far, far better than what anyone had predicted. And then, when July rolls around for this, for the current fiscal year we're in now, it's like just off the charts. It was so great. So, it's kind of just blowing everybody away. People are spending more than they've ever spent, significantly higher than it was in the, in the, in the previous year without COVID. And so, certainly, we can't predict what the trend is, is going to be from here on out, but we weathered the storm quite well during the spring months when COVID first hit. And that, those were the months that people, I think, were most worried about. So, so far, so good. We've, we've been, you know, rolling right along. And so, we felt pretty comfortable making these changes at this, you know, at this point in time. And, you know, one of the things, too, I appreciate what Mr. McMillan's saying, too, you know, you kind of want to wait and get some more information under your belt. But what, what we actually run into is, you know, keep in mind, this is not a raise. This is just simply restoring what was taken away. If we wait too late, what happens is, is we go through the year, and those days are already gone. So, we're not giving folks additional money. You know, we're, we're just restoring those days that we're asking them to work. And so what happens is, if we wait too late, then there's, you know, those days don't, there's a five extra days somewhere that they got to work. Where are they? You know, so that, so that, you know, that was another consideration.
Okay. Mr. McMillan, did you have a follow-up question?
Just a question. Is July the latest figures that you've seen?
It, it, it is. State, sales taxes run, they run about two months in arrears. So, you know, obviously, businesses file their sales tax returns to the state. The state keeps 7% of the 9.25%, and they remit the, the local portion back to the county. That's usually about a two-month turnaround. So, we're always operating about two months, you know, behind.
Well, these figures that I heard yesterday, I believe, or Monday, were on a national basis, you know, in purchasing power. Of course, you know, there's no way to know how that impacted us, us being the state of Tennessee. But I was just saying, you know, kind of, this sort of went along with what, what you were saying last week, that surprised everybody.
It really is.
I think those yesterday, on a national basis, surprised everybody.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you saying that. You know, one other thing, too, is not only have we exceeded the prior year amount in collections that, you know, non-COVID months, we also budgeted, once again, very conservatively. So, we budgeted an amount less in sales tax revenue than what we actually received this year. So, we kind of got two, two factors working in our favor. Number one, we're running far ahead of budget. Not only are we running far ahead of budget, we're running far ahead of actuals. So, there's a, there's a, gave us an extra, extra level of comfort there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm thankful that we can do this now, and, and I would hope that we would be able to do something for the teachers, and they, they certainly could use some encouragement right about now. And I know we say that we're thankful for them, and we are, but, but money, money talks, so that'd be awesome. Okay, so if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McMillan is opposed. Motion carries. Okay, and Ms. Bab will turn to public forum. Toni Coats?
Toni Coats, Knox County, again, President of the Knox County Education Association. You have really filled our hearts this afternoon when you, there's three items on here of you passing them, have showed your interest and how much you really care about Knox County educators. It doesn't matter if you are in supervision, or if you are helping a student get off the bus. But we're trying to make sure that we're doing the very best for our families here in Knox County, and doing the very best for our own personal families. Just taking that little bit of the percentage of, when we first heard of the increases back in February from you, that 7% of our insurance that we would have to come out of pocket in December was heartfelt. But when you think about just last week that you came to us and said that we could take off that, that, that 7%, and you would only have a 2%, it still was gut-wrenching. If you ever had an opportunity to sit in a classroom, which I know four of you have possibly been, have actually taught in a classroom, but I know the rest of you have actually volunteered in classrooms, but it is totally different from what you have done in the past. This year alone has become, as Ms. Kami stated earlier, the teacher of the year, is a natural disaster for educators. We love our kids, but we cannot do our job with the undue stress of added expenses of our insurance and the race, or working and not getting paid if you're administrator for five days. These things that you just passed, I know there are tons of educators in Knox County that just cried today because you said thank you to them. It is rough, and we can't do it without your support in Knox County. Is it all possible? I didn't ever think I would get this emotional, because I, too, am not sitting in their seats. When you think about the kids that are coming in the classroom, and it's changing every day, I asked a group of teachers today, when you think about your first-year teaching, was it rough? This year has become a first-year teaching for everyone. When the superintendent was in the classroom back in the day, and we won't say how long, but we know that he thought this was the worst day ever. But he and I have continuous conversations that this is something that we would never wish on our worst enemy. Again, we can't say thank you enough for taking that insurance of families that had to pay close to $125 more, and they have family members that don't even have jobs, or educators to this day that are in the hospital over COVID. Again, we can't say thank you enough. Keeping this line of communication open for your educators is one of the most valuable things that you can do. And again, we can say thank you, and I know that your administration, the administrators of Knox County will say thank you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Beeler? Is Stacy Beeler here? Angie Gothert? And please state your name and county of residence.
Hi, my name is Angie Gothert, and I'm a resident of Knox County. Is that all you needed from me? Okay. I am a daughter, a wife, and a mom. I've been a Knox County resident for decades. I love Knoxville. It's a wonderful place to live and raise family. Since all this began in the spring, the city and the county have changed drastically, and that is disheartening. As I begin this, I must let you know that I may get emotional, and I apologize if my emotions get the best of me. I do not deny there is a virus. There have been those that have gotten sick, and some have died. Protecting the elderly should be our top priority. What I have seen is that this virus has many more unintended consequences that have nothing to do with being sick, hospitalized, or dying. First, I'll start with the high schoolers that our children share their lives with. The stories they tell of being terrified that they'll go on red is heartbreaking. They constantly share that the teachers say when we go on red, not if. Add to that the fear of being removed from the building due to the chance that they may have had contact with someone who tested positive. The students that are in that building are willing to do anything to stay there. The emotional trauma that our children are suffering from a virus that they may have already had or test positive for with a test that may show they had the virus months ago, and they are no longer infectious is terrible. I fear the mental health of these children will take years to get back. Unfortunately for some, as we know too well, will never recover. Need to talk about contact tracing. How can it make sense? If someone tests positive, which we don't know if they are infectious or not, causes a process of quarantining any close contact in the last 24 hours. According to the CDC, a person who is positive, if infectious, could have shed the virus for many days before a positive test. What about all those contacts? The last 24 hours could have been past the time when the positive case was contagious. Why not stay home if you're sick? Allow the healthy to remain in school. Keep an eye on those people around that person, but sending them home is wrong. Again, the unintended consequences for the healthy are lost learning and falling further behind. No one wants that. The contact tracing must stop. Online learning is exactly the opposite of what we should be doing for our children. If there is someone who has a true medical issue, I would hope we could figure that out. But allowing thousands of children to learn online is not serving them or the children in the building well. Students receive text messages every day of how their online friends are finished, or on vacation, or out and about. If they're afraid to be in the building, why are they out and about? Also, if they're afraid to be in the building, why are they allowed to participate in extracurricular activities? These actions tell the students in the building every day, just wear your mask, stay away from your friends, and accept that there is an entire group that does not have to do any of that. But they still get to do all the fun things. The students in the building resent those that are online. The unintended consequences is the loss of true empathy for those who may have real issues when they are buried under those that say online is easier. The high schoolers also shared- say online is easier. The high schoolers also shared that they are constantly told to pull their mask up and stay apart. Many times, they are strongly spoken to about their mask when they're eating or drinking. How can they be expected to wear a mask while doing these things? Also, they've witnessed teachers outside talking on their phones, crying, and hearing them say they can't do it anymore. The fear is rampant, and we cannot continue to scare our children and our teachers. The unintended consequences of changing people to live in fear is beyond costly. One of my friends who teaches in Knox County called me in tears. I did my best to calm her down. Once she could speak, she told me that I was really the only one she can talk to other than her family. She fears if she speaks to other teachers or administrators at her school, she could lose her job. What she said next was heartbreaking. One of the little girls in her class started to cry, becoming inconsolable. She finally sat on the floor, holding her in her lap, trying to get her to calm down. When the little girl finally spoke, she said, I can't see anybody's faces, and I'm scared. At that point, she took down her mask and smiled at her, and then she asked the other students to take their masks down too, so that the little girl could see them. The other kids smiled at her. She was able to get everyone settled and back to work. What are we doing? This little girl is scared. Again, unintended consequences for this little girl may not be known for years. What we're asking of our children while at school is crushing many of them. We are instilling a complete sense of fear by our words and our actions. This is wrong. We are smart people. We can look around at other places all over the country that are doing well. Many of them do not do extreme and harmful contact tracing or mask mandates. If someone wants to wear a mask, they should be able to do so. But I should think it should always be a choice. As for contact tracing, the goal is for them to be in school. Removing children who may have been exposed does not accomplish that goal. Unintended consequences are a failure to act.
Thank you for coming to speak for us tonight.
Can I please read the last paragraph? I'm sorry. I, I have to get this out to you.
Okay, if it's brief, please.
I am not a medical professional, but since this started, my children have had many questions, and I found myself researching to find answers. I've read from those that spread fear, and those that truly want to find answers, and are considering the total health of our children. The mental health part of all this is being swept away. For a virus that according to scientists, a close to 100% chance of children and adults under 65 recovering, our fear, our biggest mistake, was closing schools in the spring. Our children are waiting for us to be the adult in the room and do the right thing. I grew up as parents from the depression. My mom and dad always said, when we know better, we do better. It's been months, and we know better. We owe it to our children to do better and protect them from the unintended consequences that are happening right before our eyes. It's time to take a stand and do better for our children.
Thank you. Amber Burns. Please state your name and county of residence.
Amber Burns, Knoxville. I'm going to be honest, that's going to be a little bit hard to follow. So I am also a parent of an Knox County kiddo, and I'm also a medical healthcare provider here in Knoxville. So I have a bit of a, of organization here on my notes, but just to be honest, so I'm in a place every day where people, people open up to me. My patients, I don't deal directly with COVID patients, but I have patients that come in from all over. I see teachers, administrators, bus drivers. I see all kinds of people, and because of my job, they talk to me. There's also a large group of parents, over 400 of us, that have started sharing our stories. And I just want to be honest and say, just like Angie just mentioned, there's some heartbreaking stories. I would like to say, we appreciate our teachers very much. I grew up, both my parents were teachers and administrators in Florida. Actually taught for four years before I went to school to be a medical professional. I respect teachers. You guys do an awesome job. I love the teachers my daughter has always had. There is no, in my opinion, no more important job than teaching and educating. I was kind of doing a bit of research going back. You know, this used to be a luxury. Education used to be a luxury. Now it's something we have to have for our kids long-term to be able to survive, you know, change their economic status. It is a priority. My opinion, it is as important as healthcare. It is as important as going to the grocery store and getting groceries. I fear the long-term ramifications of changing drastically to our education system is going to be really tough. Now, I think virtual option is valid for some people. There are some people that are affected by this. Most of those people are older adults. I worked with an inpatient doctor recently who works at Fort Sanders in the COVID floor, and I asked him what his opinion was with kids in school. He said, Amber, it's not the kids, it's not the parents that we need to be worried about. It is those grandparents. It is other family members with comorbid conditions that we need to be more worried about. School is not a harmful place for our kids. I would ask that as we move forward, I know you guys speak with the Board of Health, we have to learn that data is always continuing to change. School has been open now long enough. There is new research. The people who have made policies came from a place of fear. This is a very fearful time for all of us. But we have more research. We have more good information now that we can start looking at. Now, we're talking about kids specifically. They now know that the mortality rate in kids is no higher than the seasonal flu. In kids. We're not talking about older adults, people who have comorbid conditions. This is no worse than the flu in kids, in the population that we're talking about. The mortality rate is very low. Deborah's going to talk in a minute and give you more numbers, but there has been no deaths in Knox County from COVID. There have been other very serious things that have happened before, because of COVID, that may lead to depression, suicide. We all know somebody who's been affected. That can be more harmful. Do I think that there needs to be things done in school? Yes. I'm in the unpopular side that I say, I don't have a problem wearing masks. I sent my daughter to Knox County because I thought if she was wearing a mask, at least she could stay in school. I talked to somebody yesterday who does contact tracing and works with the Board of Health in another county, and I asked her specifically, if both people are wearing masks, what is the chance of exposure? Her answer, very low. Ask anybody. It's very low. In healthcare, if both of us are wearing masks, even if that person tests positive later, they go, your chance was very low. You just monitor your symptoms, take your temperature, go to work. So what I would say is, you know, when the question comes up, why is Knox County remaining very low in COVID transmission? It's because we're doing what we need to do. It's not because we're sending all these kids home. We don't need to do that because their chance is very low they're wearing masks. The only other thing I kind of wanted to get to, I know the chances of all this changing are actually very slim, but I would ask that we looked at new data, is helping our parents when we know that we're getting towards a school closure. I would ask for more transparency. Let us have numbers, more specifically, more specifically, it can even, even be percentages for schools. I know there's cases in my daughter's school, I have no idea how many. Do I need to prepare now? Do I have time? Are we doing okay? Be nice to know that, because I've exchanged emails with a few of you. There is no healthcare, childcare options right now available to parents last minute. Safety is an issue. These kids are staying home alone illegally, because parents have to work. Childcare options that are available, like Boys and Girls Club, we're talking about 30 to 60 kids in a group together. More dangerous outside of school than if they were in school. Smaller group of kids, wearing masks, safety precautions. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Howard. Please state your name and county of residence.
Deborah Howard, Knox County. Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board members. I want to read you a quick declaration signed by several doctors that you can find online. So this is the Great Barrington Declaration. Okay, some of this talks about a lockdown, but just ignore that part. As infectious disease epidemiologists and public health scientists, we have grave concerns about the damaging physical and mental health impacts of the prevailing COVID-19 policies, and recommend an approach we call focused protection. Coming from both the left and the right, and around the world, we have devoted our careers to protecting people. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on short and long-term health. The results, to name a few, include lower childhood vaccination rates, worsening cardiovascular disease outcomes, fewer cancer screenings, and deteriorating mental health, leading to greater excess mortality in the years to come. With the working class and younger members of society carrying the heaviest burden, keeping students out of school is a grave injustice. And I would just say that's the portion that deals with the whole isolation, which I refuse to call it quarantining, because that's what you do when you're sick. This is isolation that we're doing to our kids. Keeping these measures in place until a vaccine is available will cause irreparable damage with the underprivileged disproportionately harmed. Fortunately, our understanding of the virus is growing. We know that vulnerability to death from COVID-19 is more than a thousandfold higher in the old and infirm than in the young. Indeed, for children, COVID-19 is less dangerous than many other harms, including influenza. As immunity builds in the population, the risk of infection to all, including the vulnerable, falls. We know that all populations will eventually reach herd immunity, the point at which the rate of new infection is stable, and that can be assisted by, but not dependent upon, a vaccine. Our goal should therefore be to minimize mortality and social harm until we reach herd immunity. The most compassionate approach that balances the risks and benefits of reaching herd immunity is to allow those who are at minimal risk to death, of death, to live their lives normally, to build up immunity to the virus through natural infection, while better protecting those who are at highest risk. We call this focused protection. Those who are not vulnerable should immediately be allowed to resume life as normal. Simple hygiene measures such as hand washing and staying home when sick should be practiced by everyone to reduce the herd immunity threshold. Schools and universities should be open for in-person teaching. Extracurricular activities such as sports should be resumed. Young, low-risk adults should work normally rather than from home. Restaurants and other businesses should open. Arts, music, sports, and other cultural activities should resume. People who are more at risk may participate if they wish, while society as a whole enjoys the protection conferred upon the vulnerability, the vulnerable by those who have built up herd immunity. Dr. Martin Koldorf from Harvard, Dr. Sunny Tragupta from Oxford University, and Dr. Jay Batacharia from Stanford University. The Great Barrington Declaration. So you can find that online. I just want to end with a few numbers. When I spoke to you all in September, one month ago, we had 791 cases in the age group of 0 to 17, with nine hospitalized and zero deaths. Today, there's 1,137 cases that we've had, 10 hospitalizations and zero deaths. Nationwide, in that group, 95 deaths in that age range. I don't like any death of anybody, especially children, but that's extremely low. In the H1N1 pandemic of 2009 to 2010, there were 358 deaths in that age range. We didn't wear masks. We didn't send kids home because they were near somebody. Average flu-related deaths range, the range from 2004 to 2019 is between 37 and 187, just on a regular flu. Today, this is the part that I want to specifically talk to, is that the kids aren't getting the teacher sick, and they're really not getting each other sick. They're probably getting it somewhere else. Because if you look, before school was even in session, per the Knox County COVID tracker, there were as many teachers testing positive for COVID as there are today. There have been more children who have tested positive, but no more teachers. So the kids are getting it and recovering. They're fine. The teachers are getting it and obviously recovering. So we're not really having a problem with the kids giving it to the teachers. And I agree with the two previous speakers that the whole isolation thing needs to stop. And I have for you all, something to leave you with, so you can look up data on your own, a whole list of resources for you. They're stapled together, so each one of you can have one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public forum, and I would like to thank all of our public forum speakers that came out tonight and to share their stories with us. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bab. And we are adjourned. Thank you.